All right, I'd like to reconvene the meeting of the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, January 7th, 2021. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its hands.
Okay, let's see. First item, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Oh, there's in favor. Let's see. Mary. Jim.
Aye, for Jim.
Okay. Rita.
Aye.
Kathy.
Aye.
And myself. All right, first item is board reports. Let's see, Nagina, you are first. You are at the top of my screen.
All right, so last week, SLAC held its meeting for second quarter. We had a great outcome with 50 students in attendance from both the St. Mary's Association of Student Councils and SLAC. It was incredible to hear from these students as we focused on the topics of unity, mental health, and improving distance learning. Last weekend, I also attended an informational seminar about the Maryland General Assembly, which was hosted by the Maryland Association of Student Councils. This event afforded the opportunity to discuss many topics ranging from the function and arrangement of the Maryland General Assembly to who our representatives are and to how to advocate, ways to advocate at the state level of government. That's all for my report.
Mrs. Washington?
Hello, everyone. So, being in a pandemic, there are still many events going on, but they are virtual. So I've been to three virtual events. On Monday, January 18th, I attended the Martin Luther King Prayer Celebration, and it was sponsored by St. Mary's College of Maryland, St. Mary's County NAACP, the 7-0-25 branch, St. Mary's County Human Relations Commission, St. Mary's County Public Schools, the College of Southern Maryland, and the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated New Zeta Omega Chapter. The keynote speaker was Dr. Crystal Fleming, Professor of Sociology and Africana Studies of State University of New York, Stony Branch. And the topic was "What Matters to You?" And from not her speaker, from another speaker, there were three quotes from Dr. King that I really liked, and I'm going to share them with you. One quote is, "Nothing in the world is more dangerous than sincere ignorance and conscientious stupidity." Another one of my favorite is, "The most dangerous criminal may be the man gifted with reason, but not with morals." And another one, "The function of education is to teach one to think intensively and to think critically." And the final one, "An individual who has not begun to live until he can rise above the narrow horizons of his particular individualistic concerns through the broader concerns of all humanity." And finally, the rhythm club at Spring Ridge Middle School also performed under the direction of Ms. Bonnie Babings, and they did it virtually as well. Then I attended the virtual Becker Scholarship Fair, and it was outstanding. And if I were an evaluator, I would have given it an A+. I want to thank Dr. Bob Schaller, Mark Smith, Tammy Burr, Colleen Blondell, Principal Egan, the three high school access representative, Ms. Wilson, Leonardtown High School, Ms. White, Chopticon High School, and Ms. Willis from Great Mills High School. I checked in at four o'clock, and at that time, 137 students had signed in. Throughout the evening, the numbers continued to increase. There were 25-plus scholarship providers. The health room had high school representatives to assist with financial aid assistance to fill out the Common Scholarship Application. And there was a welcome to the scholarship fair from Dr. Bob Schaller. He explained how it would work, and he answered the students' and parents' questions. From there, the students went to what they call a "big game here," and there they had additional questions answered. Then from there, they went to the breakout rooms for any particular scholarship of their interest, and a detailed list of all the scholarships were provided on the site. Students were reminded to use Navvions, and they could also check it for local and national scholarships. A student would do is put in their his or her area of interest, and Navvions would display those scholarship opportunities. Overall, the Becker Scholarship was brilliantly done. Many of the benefits of going virtual could be permanently utilized. It was as if students were having one-on-one interaction with the representative, and it was simple to navigate. It was really well done. Then it was the virtual text expo at the Forest Center, and it started off with Mr. Egan welcoming everybody in for the expo. He explained that the tech center has real world and real learning. He explained why the Forest Center is a good choice, how to apply, how to get accepted, and what are the programs. They listed the one-year programs, two-year programs, and three-year programs. A question-and-answer session was provided for each program, and there was an overview done by the individual instructors for the particular program, talking about the curriculum expectations and the requirements. Students were required to go to each question-and-answer session for the program of their interest, and teachers were present for their particular program. And there was a virtual tour, about 12 minutes, on all the Forest Center programs, and each program has a website. So I chose one to attend, since it was so many. I attended the Academy of Health Professionals. Ms. Howell and Ms. Skinner were there to meet prospective students. They conducted different live sessions. They discussed the clinical experiences and opportunities, dissections, guest speakers, field trips, Skills USA licensing opportunities, prerequisites, and mentors for students. Then step three, after the students went through that, they had a counseling session with Ms. Kraft, and she talked about building their high school schedule, graduation requirements, internships. And each high school and Fairlead Academy had a counselor present at the expo to answer questions one-on-one with students, or the students were able to email their counselors later. Overall, it was creative, well-done, informative, and it was very personal. So students could get their questions answered, and other students could hear those questions, so everybody was learning. So thanks to Principal Egan, the teachers, the counselors, the career centers for doing a fabulous job. They really, all the virtual events were really good, and it just shows the resiliency and the flexibility of the school system in order to change and do things regardless of the circumstances that we are going through, namely the pandemic. So thank you very much for giving me an opportunity to share those three virtual events that I attended.
Thank you. Mr. Davis?
The only thing I could add to what Mrs. Washington just said about the COVID-19, I, for some reason, because of my youth and experience, I got selected to get a shot. And I just wanted to encourage it. All that are listening, if you have a chance, make sure you get the COVID-19 antibody shot. I got that first shot at Hollywood Barhouse, and I think I'm scheduled next week, I think, for my second shot. But I would just encourage everybody that's listening. I would give high compliments to the Department of Health in taking care of our first responders and also our teachers. I'm trusting that all of the teachers have gotten their shots by now. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Mrs. Weaver?
I'm going to follow up with what Mr. Davis said. I want to thank all the SMCPS school nurses that have worked at the Health Department to make sure that, you know, not only the teachers and the staff have been able to get their vaccine, but also our community. I know they've been, like, a lot of them have been going in on the weekends and things like that to make sure that our community is taken care of. I think it's a great working relationship with, you know, between the Health Department and the school to be able to pull this off. I understand that it is very well organized. I've heard from so many people how, you know, how easy it is to go through. My number has not come up yet, so to be able to qualify. So just waiting for that time so that I can tell you. I know it'll be a good experience going through. So thank you to all those school nurses.
Kathy?
I joined Dr. Smith and Sheriff Tim Cameron last week in providing testimony on behalf of Senate Bill 239 to the education, I'm blanking here, education, EEHE.
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 Health and Environmental Affairs. There we go.
There you go. Thank you very much. The bill is one that I spoke about a couple of weeks ago. The board came to consensus on providing a letter of testimony at the request of Senator Bailey, and the bill reestablishes only for St. Mary's County consequences in the event student, either public or non-public, is caught on school premises using or in possession of any form of tobacco, including e-cigarettes. The consequences were removed a couple of years ago when the bill was taken up to change the age, and it has presented some great challenges that only the seller faces consequences and that students do not. And in this case, the first consequence is that a student who's caught would be required to attend a smoking cessation class. And should there be any subsequent transgressions, the first could be subject to a civil fine not to exceed $50, and any subsequent would be not to exceed $100. So we're hopeful that it will be voted out of committee and that it will be taken up by the full Senate and also by the House. Again, it would only apply to us, and I'm grateful that Senator Bailey asked Sheriff Cameron, Superintendent Smith, and myself to be part of the panel presenting to EEHE. That's all.
Okay, so this weekend was all of the championship games for the National Football League, and unfortunately, my team did not make it to Championship Sunday, so I had some extra time on my hands. So what I did on Sunday is I went back and began in July of 2020, and I went through and tagged all of the COVID-related emails that the Board of Education, just the Board of Education, not matters concerned or to Dr. Smith, that we have received since July 1st, which was the start of this fiscal year. And the total, not counting the ones that came in today, which I think were five or six, was 250. This stack right here is 38 of the 250 emails that the Board of Education has received. So then I went through and I categorized them. And since July, these have been the themes that have been running through these emails. Not returning to school in the fall, not returning teachers and staff to the buildings in August, not returning students to the building for in-person instruction in October, thanking us for pushing pause and returning to virtual learning, not returning students to school due to Halloween, Thanksgiving, Christmas, whatever holiday it was at the time, not returning students to school until February, not returning students to school until teachers and staff receive the vaccine, not returning students to school until teachers and staff receive the second dose of the vaccine, and now this week, after Governor Hogan's press conference this past, or last week, not returning students to school until after spring break, which I'm sure we're going to be revised because then we're going to be hit with, well, everyone was gathering over spring break and therefore, you know, we shouldn't return to school. So every time it seems that we've made an attempt to return students to school, there's another conditional roadblock that is put up there. But yet, we're kind of accused of moving the goalposts. So also included in these 250 emails, we've had letters from parents voicing their concerns about returning their students to school and the risks involved. We've also had letters from parents who want to return their students to school and have them participate in sports, extracurricular activities, you know, kind of get back to their lives. We've had letters from parents and guardians who tell us that their child is excelling at virtual learning. And then we've also had letters that have said, well, my student is just dismally frustrated with virtual learning. They can't seem to do it, or they're just outright failing. Students who were A and B students are now C and D students because they can't do it. So obviously, there's not an easy solution to any of the challenges that SMCPS or the community has had over the past 10 months. But what is crystal clear, as both a parent and a community member and a board member, is that everyone is working so hard to ensure that support has been provided to our staff, teachers, and students. Now, what I have not seen in any of these emails is a thank you to anyone, really, especially Dr. Smith and Dr. Brewster, for coordinating and holding vaccination slots for our teachers and staff and making sure that you guys were first in line to get them, or one of the first in line, excuse me. There was no thank you for continuing to pay our entire staff throughout this pandemic, right? And I can remind you, there's multiple jurisdictions across the state that have had to furlough or riff employees, and we have not done that. We have not even broached that subject at any point in time. We have not had any conversation about the massive volume that Dr. Smith and Dr. Brewster coordinated with the COVID money to supply the schools whenever we reopen with PPE, and that includes students, teachers, staff, bus drivers, from now until the end of the year, if not even longer, if it continues. Okay? Dr. Smith and the staff have been coordinating with the county health officer almost daily since March. And as we have just now seen from Charles County not more than four hours ago, who have canceled the vaccination clinics for their teachers and basically said, hey, guys, you got one dose, go find somewhere to get your second one, right? But yet, we have continually coordinated with the health officer and the Health Department to make sure that we are taken care of. In addition to the fact that Dr. Brewster has walked our buildings, made sure that we are socially distanced, make sure that when we bring students back, that we have the safest environment possible. And also, I'm going to give her a plug for Friday. She's also set up two school-based health centers at both Margaret Brent Middle School and Spring Ridge Middle School. And I'm over the top excited about Margaret Brent because a lot of the money and services get pushed down to the southern part of the county. So I'm overly thrilled that we're going to have one at Margaret Brent. And then the other point that we really haven't seen is just simply on the mental health of our children. And, I mean, I'm going to speak as a parent here, but I can't tell you how many times I've been contacted about a child who's been struggling academically, emotionally, or socially, right? Either people that are stopping me, people that are texting me, whatever. My own 13-year-old son has sent text messages to multiple friends that he has not seen since March because he has seen something on a group chat or a Google chat during a classroom, or something that maybe they posted on social media that he was worried about, that, you know, maybe, you know, they would do something. And I see this because obviously I track his messages. And then just to see the support even and across the level of how much our students are supporting each other, you know, off, you know, and I know the teachers are frustrated that kids aren't turning on their cameras, but there's a flurry of activity among the students in those classrooms about content and questions, and they have somewhat bonded together even virtually in order to make sure that they're supporting each other and helping each other with assignments and making sure that, you know, that they, excuse me, that they saw this one was posted or whatever. So we have somewhat wrecked the fabric of our students' lives with removing school and their daily activities. And for some of these kids, they've been in school since they were three years old, and we've just ripped that away from them. So as Dr. Smith has mentioned, from day one, the plan has always been to return to school, and now it seems to be the time. So the established safety measures have been in place for months. We haven't changed them. Everything that we've been doing in August is what has been drilled in. Dr. Smith and Dr. Montgomery have repeatedly gone to the buildings in order to talk to administration to make sure that those rules are enforced. Now we have the added benefit of a vaccine for our staff. So despite what anyone says and what's out on social media and whatever, that this school system has worked tirelessly to ensure the safety of our students and staff. So I just would like everyone to take a moment and acknowledge the extreme amount of work that has been done, not just by SMCPS, but by the county as well, because as we have seen, other counties are not where we are with our vaccination clinics and with our vaccination rollout plans, and those counties are going to be suffering. So just, I want everyone to just take a moment and recognize all of the support that we have in our community and recognize the fact that the pandemic is affecting every single one of us. We're not trying to be decisive, but we are all still in this together. So, and with that, I will release my soapbox, and we will send Dr. Smith over to his report.
I'll go follow up on that. How about that? Wonderful. I'm going to start at the front of this. The 21st, the governor, the acting assistant state representative from the Health Department, the state superintendent, held a press conference. We were not given any knowledge of it ahead of time. We did not know what was going to be stated. We, like everybody else, turned to Twitter, or Facebook, or YouTube. We heard very clearly that the governor and the health representative and the state superintendent expect schools to reopen. Very specifically, the direction from the state to quickly and safely restore in-person learning for Maryland students, prioritizing students who are most academically vulnerable. Some degree of in-person learning should be the immediate goal for all students in all jurisdictions, and then based on local conditions, schools should be able to move forward daily in-person learning for more students over time. Moreover, there was a general feeling that school systems weren't necessarily doing as much as they should or could be able to do. I know a lot of people took that to heart. Some people, it really offended because they know how much we've been working. What I'm here to tell you is, I'm not sure who they were talking about, but it wasn't us. It wasn't us. Our SMCPS teachers and support staff, at the very beginning of the pandemic, implemented a secure, robust, interactive, learning management system, School A G, to provide synchronous and asynchronous instruction to students. Our SMCPS teachers and staff connected with students and parents through Google Meets and other platforms to deliver instruction, remediation, counseling, and support daily. Our SMCPS teachers and staff secured and deployed one-to-one technology, providing each student with a device. We went from one-to-three to one-to-one in a matter of months. Our SMCPS teachers and staff deployed hotspots and created Wi-Fi zones so that the internet is accessible for all of our students, high-speed internet. Moreover, our SMCPS teachers and staff partnered with the county government to connect homes to cable service, middle mile and last mile. We are at over 97% of all of our students' homes have cable provided to them, and we continue to work on the last remaining 3%. Our SMCPS teachers have been in the building, delivering in-person and virtual instruction, depending upon what phase we were, and supporting our kids with food and opportunity since September. Our SMCPS teachers and staff have provided modified athletic seasons and extracurricular activities for students in the fall and have a concrete plan to continue it in the spring. Our SMCPS teachers and staff partnered with the St. Mary's County Health Department to secure vaccinations, first and second dose, to all staff before students return to the schools. And our staff was provided three days, two weeks ago, and next week, multiple days to receive their second shot. Moreover, we secured several thousand additional doses over the weekend and sent that notice out to teachers and all staff in the event that they hadn't been able to make the first round. Our SMCPS teachers and staff created and stayed true to a phased student return-to-school plan that follows all of the guidelines provided by the Center for Disease Control, the Maryland Department of Health, and the St. Mary's County Health Department. So I don't know who they were talking about, but it wasn't us. Because St. Mary's County is an exceptional county. You need to be proud every single day to live in this county, to have your government, your Health Department, and your school system working on your behalf. Our staff members are exceptional every single day. I was going to bring in a whole summary of all of the additional, you know, the excellence in online education. They continue to come in. We're almost to 1,500 nominees. Over the last several weeks, we've been highlighting incredible staff for teaching and leadership and support and putting that all out there. We are an incredible school system. So anybody who watched the governor's press conference and thought that there was a disparagement being made about St. Mary's County teachers, I assure you, it wasn't us. The guidance that came out is pretty thin. It says that we're supposed to implement all of the things that we said we were going to implement. Check, Mark. Yeah, sure. We're going to seek to limit transmission in the school. All right. Click. Check. Yeah. We're going to consider the school's ability to manage operational issues. Yeah. Check. We're going to provide parents and caregivers the opportunity to choose a remote option for their children. Yeah. Yeah. This isn't new guidance. This is basically saying, you all had a plan. Start doing the plan. And that's great. They cite new research. All right, everybody has research. Read this story, read this story, read this story, read this story. Look to your source. If it's Facebook and it's not coming from, say, like, the CDC, or from JAMA, the Journal of American Medical Associations, then kind of take it as it's somebody's really great opinion. And we all have opinions. Thank you very much. Two reports that came out in the last week or so have been looking at the actual data gathered from students who are back in schools. And what they're seeing and what the data is demonstrating is that if everybody does what we all said we were going to do, which is wear a mask, wash our hands, try to socially distance as much as possible, the rate of transmission in schools is no greater than in the community in general, and in fact, sometimes lower, and it doesn't pose any more risks than not having kids in school. We can agree or disagree. We can take whatever. I'm a doctor, not that kind of doctor. I look to a doctor, doctor. And this is what those two stories, this is what those two reports have said. The good news is, we have a plan. We've always had the plan. It's still the same plan. Our plan hasn't changed. Go to the website, go take a look at it. The dates will be a little different. Our plan is phased in. Right now, we're completely virtual. The next phase is to go into a hybrid classroom instruction where we're going two days out of five, and the other days, they're working online, ultimately building toward the point where we have all the kids in-person instruction every single day. All right? We're in the first part of that. We need to move to the second. All of it is predicated on choice. Parents are going to have to make a choice as to whether or not they feel comfortable having their children participate in a hybrid learning environment. We posed this question before. We had over 74% of parents said they wanted their kids to return to school. I haven't seen evidence that that's going to necessarily change. So where are we now? We're ready. We talked about it in early January. We've talked about it back, well, all the way back in October when we first presented it. We're ready to return students to school. We have done everything that we possibly can as a system to be prepared. We've taken all of the recommendations within the buildings itself. We've gone so far as even vaccinating all of our staff, both doses, before the kids come back. What will happen is Phase 1, February 8th, two weeks from now, we'll start special programs. That's only a handful of students. These are contained These are contained classrooms. These are very small programs. We're working directly with the parents and the teachers and the support staff to coordinate, but these kids desperately need to get back into an instructional program. So they're going to come back for one week, four days, February 8th, 9th, 10th, and 11th. Then we have a three-day weekend. We have President's Day. It will be nine, seven to nine days since the people have received their second dose for maximum efficacy. They are Pfizer doses. They have an efficacy rate of 94%. We will begin Phase Two. This is as far as we got in October going in in November. That's Head Start, Pre-K, K, and 1, grade six, grade nine, and grade 12. And if people ask why those grades, that's because those are our most struggling students. Those are the students that are new to either school entirely or new to middle school and the rigors of it, or new to high school and the challenges of courses that are for credit all the way up to they are seniors and we need to support them because they need to graduate on time with their peers. The final phase, the end of it, is March 1st. So by March 1st, we will be bringing back all of our students in a phased program. That's Head Start, Pre-K, K, 1 through 5, middle school, 6, 7, and 8, high school, 9 through 12. What it lays out in the calendar is, hey, we're Wednesday of this week. Next week starts February. Next week, we will not have students in the building. We are still all virtual, and that's great because it affords us the opportunity to have our students, pardon me, to have our teachers go and get their second shot, their second round vaccines. If they went to the first, they were immediately reached out to and scheduled for the second. We are offering much what we did last time. If it's during the regular work week, we offer you administrative leave. And if you don't feel well afterwards, liberal leave can be taken. That means that we'll get through that first week, and every single employee will have had the opportunity to get their first and second round vaccines. Phase One then starts. No school for President's Day. Phase Two gets us through to the end of the month. March, March is a return to some sense of normal with all of our kids in the building. Four solid weeks of hybrid before we get to spring break and where we can then take a look at when we come back from spring break. That'll be then the end of the third marking period, we can consider where we truly are. Transportation, we're going to follow the same plan that we've put forward several times, 30% capacity. Masks are required on buses. Food service, we're going to continue to provide the incredible service that we have to kids where they're not only given meals for the day, but then at the end of the day, they're given meals to then carry them over to the next day. And we're going to have opportunities for you to come up and pick up meals as well, as well as meals for over the weekend. And because somebody's going to ask, activities, athletics, extracurricular activities, we did not have a winter season. We went into recess right before it was to begin. We paused right as it was to begin. We did not have a winter season. And for all of our incredible winter athletes, I'm sorry that you didn't have that opportunity. But we will begin fall sports on that February 13th. It will be a two-month program, followed by spring sports, which will start in April and go till the end of the school year. There are also going to be extracurricular activities and things such as that after school as well. That's where we are. We've worked really, really hard to get here. This is as much as we could possibly ever do to be prepared. I will tell you, your stories of students suffering is something that we are all hearing. We definitely have kids in despair. We have response teams that have been going out to homes. We've had kids who have attempted and taken their lives. I realize this is a passionate thing, and I know everybody feels very strongly about this, but it is our job to educate kids. We have done everything that we possibly can, and now it's to get to the business of reopening our schools and bringing our kids back into the classroom. So with that, I thank you very much for the opportunity to share where we are with that. And I turn it back to you.
Does anyone from the board have any questions?
Yes, I have a question for Dr. Smith.
Sure.
You've mentioned the CDC, I think, the AMA reports. There was an article in the front page of the paper today that corroborated what you were saying, that there doesn't seem to be any discernible incident of increased COVID, students getting COVID-19 if they're in a private school or a parochial school as opposed to public schools. So my question, do you have any data at all in St. Mary's County for the parochial and private schools in the county? And how, because they're doing in-person now. And how does that data, if you have it, compare with the national data? Do you have that information?
Yeah, so, no, I don't. The parochial school doesn't need to report their data publicly to me. Certainly, they work with the health department. They have been on in-person and hybrid learning schedules. The, every, major news sources have all run this two stories, going back to the CDC report and the Journal of American Medical, the JAMA article, that really, it's just a presentation of data. And it says of the two studies that they did, they did not find discernible differences in transmission in students who were attending school versus the community spread in general, including very limited transmission between students and particularly staff. All of that being said, we're not making a decision based on any of that. We're making a decision based on all the work that we've done, all the preparation that we've done, and the fact that we've been able to vaccinate fully all of our staff before we have students re-enter school.
Well, my understanding is you had to get down to five per 100,000? That's what we, that was a threshold?
Jim, that was, that was the guidance that was removed that, that the, that was removed last week. So the new slide that Scott had up with the four or five items that he said was very loose, that is what we are now operating under. So.
Both the governor, the state superintendent, and the acting assistant state-
Dr. Chen.
Dr. Chen, all said that there isn't, that the recent study demonstrates that there isn't a heightened risk of transmission in schools. So regardless of the community spread metrics, kids should be coming back to school. I don't, I'm not going to argue one way or the other on that. All I know is that we said that when we had everybody vaccinated, we were going back. We were going to open schools. So everybody will be vaccinated and ready to go by the second week of February. So we will be opening our schools.
And the last item that I have for the parents, please check your smores or your weekly newsletters or whatever your principals are sending out. That is where all this information is contained. Typically, for my kids, it comes out on Sunday, sometimes even Saturday afternoon, depending on when they schedule the email. And just to reiterate, because I know I personally have had a lot of calls about it, if you filled out the survey about whether or not your child was virtual or, you know, coming to school back in October, if you've changed your mind, please contact your school and let them know. Because the plans, you know, they have like a little checkmark as to where they are right now. So that way, we can ensure that we have everyone where they're supposed to be.
Every single student is designated as either Group A, Group B, or Group V for virtual.
Right.
The only other thing is that there will be a follow-up letter that gets sent to all parents tomorrow that summarizes the presentation and the dates that we just, that we just made, as well as links to this presentation, as well as links to the guidance from the state, as well as the links to the two articles that I referenced.
Okay. All right. And now for recognitions for Mr. Todd Burrows, who's been very patiently waiting to present the superintendent's art gallery for the first marking period of the year.
Hey, hold on, let me, where, uh-oh. Let me open that up for you, Mr. Burrows. Hold on.
Thank you, sir.
There it is.
A sneak peek of the artwork.
All right, Mr. Burrows, you are on, sir.
All right, thank you. Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
Good to be back with all of you to recognize some of our outstanding young artists here in St. Mary's County. Tonight, we're recognizing student artwork that appeared in the 2020, 2021 school year's first marking period superintendent's art gallery. For the gallery, each quarter, student artwork is selected to be displayed in the Board of Education meeting room and in the hallway leading to Dr. Smith's office. As mentioned during our previous recognition, in our current environment, the arts and engagement in the creative process are so important to our students, it allows them an emotional outlet to help them cope, grow, and celebrate who they are. For many of our students, the arts are where they feel safe and have a sense of belonging. As always, we are so incredibly fortunate that Dr. Smith and our Board of Education members understand this and have advocated for our arts programs to continue moving forward during this time of hybrid and virtual instruction. Thank you so much. Traditionally, for this recognition, we'd all be gathered in the boardroom. Students would be called up to receive a certificate, and then they would take their artwork home with the conclusion. Unfortunately, we're not able to do that yet. However, we are able to recognize our artists tonight, and my office will soon be in touch with participants for information regarding the pickup of those certificates and artwork. Hopefully, in the very near future, we'll be able to all gather again in the boardroom for these recognitions. So without further ado, we'd like to recognize the following student artists. From Great Mills High School, Sonia Bugler. From Spring Bridge Middle School, Alexandra Clark. From Evergreen Elementary School, Reed Dyer. From Green Hills Elementary School, Aneah Fant. From White Marsh Elementary School, Charlotte Corilla. From Park Hall Elementary School, Jordan Parham. And from Mackensville Elementary School, Olivia Penny. Congratulations again to all of our student artists.
And before you, before you leave us, Mr. Burrows, I just thank you very much for all the work that you do on behalf of St. Mary's County Public Schools and our kids. And I know that this has been a really challenging year because we haven't been able to attend plays and our concerts and spend all those wonderful evenings and events together. I never realized how much I really treasure that. And so for all of our artists, thank you very much for contributing. It is really wonderful, and we, you know, we hope, we hope to, we hope to see you soon. And thank you for sharing your great skills.
Thank you. And I can't wait till we're all back together. It's going to be incredibly special, and we're really looking forward to it soon. So thank you again, Board of Ed members and Dr. Smith. Much appreciated.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr., Mr. Burrows.
Thank you, Mrs. Washington.
The artwork is beautiful. It's tremendous. It's a testament to our wonderful art educators. Very good.
Yes, we have, they're incredibly brilliant, they're creative, and they're still finding ways to engage kids in the creative process. I'm so proud of each one of them, truly.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We're chuckling just for all of the teachers who have the pets roaming into the background. Jim Davis's cat has taken perch over his shoulder. So we can, we, we see what happens. Okay, we have one public hearing tonight, which is on the Program of Studies. Did, Kim, did anyone sign up for the public hearing?
Yes, there are three.
Well, this is public hearing on the Program of Studies, not necessarily public comment.
No.
Okay. So we did receive one letter from Dr. Walthour, who is the Education Committee Chair for the NAACP. I'm just going to summarize it briefly because we do have a number of people in here waiting for public comment. They are, she, they did watch the presentation, and she is encouraging the board to continue to include students, parents, and community members to provide input for other curriculum changes needed, specifically when developing and revising programs of study. Please consider the "Re-Educate St. Mary's" letter and the NAACP's petition, which gives information about what students, former students and other community members know or perceive about what needs to be addressed, reviewed, and/or changed in education programming. We believe that an audit of the history, civic education, and social justice curriculum and programs of study in these areas would be in order. There are equity issues to consider in pathways programs as well, and we have made recommendations in that area. In particular, outreach to minority students to encourage enrollment. We believe that in the process of developing and revising programs of study, student enrollment and diversity and inclusion should be key factors. To Mrs. Bachner, our minority students being recruited, enrolling, and attending programs at the technology centers such as dental assisting, natural resources conservation, and electrical wiring programs. Please look at all the programs of study, curriculum changes, student participation, et cetera, with the equity lens as stated in the equity policy. So, and I will make sure that the board has a copy, and that can go onto the minutes. And I think that's, that's all that I have seen that has come in on the Program of Studies. So with that, we will move on to public comment. And I will read the statement. If you want to call the, whoever's first, they can move to the podium while I go about this. Okay, so the board welcomes input, public input on policies and issues affecting our schools. We take the time to listen and consider, but not to comment. This is not an appropriate forum for negative comments or criticisms of individual staff or students. Concerns about individual staff members that cannot be resolved at the level closest to the situation should be directed to the superintendent. We also keep, please keep in mind, we sit as an appellate body in both student and employee appeals. We cannot comment on or have prior knowledge of a case that would influence our ability to deliberate. So please do not present these issues a public comment. Everyone is required to sign at the beginning of the meeting. It's limited to three minutes per speaker, and you may not yield your time to someone else. And if you provide your comments to Kim, she will make them part of our board record.
Hi, good evening. I'm Sarah Penrod, President of the Education Association of St. Mary's County. Joining me tonight is my executive officer team, my left Sharon Page, Secretary, Treasurer Angie Gostha, and Vice President Elaine Deems. Before I go into the prepared statement that I had, I'd like to address some of the statements that were made by the board. Last I checked, there were almost 400 people viewing this Board of Education meeting live. That's a lot of, a lot of my members. I've got two phones here, and they've been blowing up since the start of this meeting. And I'd like to read to you one of the messages that I just received a few moments before. In regards to Ms. Bailey's statements about people thanking the Board of Ed and Superintendent Smith for all of their hard work, I was offended. I was not aware I needed to send thank you notes to the Board of Ed for doing their elected I'd like to clarify that many, many of our members have emailed to thank the Board of Ed and Dr. Smith. I know this because I was copied on most of them. ESMIC sent out a message to our members just a couple of weeks ago praising Dr. Smith and thanking him for helping to get our educators pushed to the front of the line for the vaccine. So I don't know who you were referring to, but it wasn't us. We've been thankful. As for moving the goalposts, well, we have been moving the goalposts. We've actually kind of eliminated them. As Mr. Davis just mentioned a few minutes before, the goalpost has been 5%. And now that's completely out the window. So you can't blame people for being concerned when that 5% goalpost has suddenly evaporated into thin air. I don't even think I need to finish reading this, just one more comment. Someone once told me that we are all judged by the words we choose, the actions we take, and the motivations behind both. If I were to be judged here today, I would want it to be for standing respectfully up for science, for safety, and the well-being of our entire community. Thank you.
Hi, my name's David Kirk, and I live up the street in Hollywood. It's good to see y'all again. I have two children in our schools, and from all of us, thank you so much for your selfless work, for all the extra work that I know has been done dealing with this unprecedented situation that we're in, that we find ourselves in. So thank you, and thanks for this opportunity to speak. We strongly support the governor's and the state superintendent's call for a return to the classroom. state superintendent's call for a return to the classroom. I know we're not alone in this support. I want to commend Dr. Smith again for proposing a sound plan for getting our kids back in the classroom, a plan that strikes a balance between keeping us safe from COVID and educating our kids properly. As you pointed out, the plan's been around for a few months now. We haven't got a chance to use it yet, so now's the time. It's unfortunate that it seems to have taken what amounts to orders and kind of veiled threats from the governor and the state superintendent of education to make us move. Y'all are leaders. That's why you're sitting up there. And I know that we're all looking forward to lead the way back into the classroom, lead our faculty and staff, make them feel good about doing it, and do what needs to be done to make it as safe as possible. And I see that happening. Very good. The statistics and graphs of COVID, they don't tell the whole story. It's so easy to get mired down in that. There's way more to it. And other districts in Maryland have had students in class instruction for months. They haven't had a huge increase in COVID. The local private schools have had kids in class for months, some even full-time, without a big increase in COVID, or any increase. So, the numbers don't tell the whole story. You're courageous people, and I think together, we can all be courageous. Get the kids back, take some smart risk, do smart mitigation, and we'll exceed what has been demanded of us by the state. The overwhelming majority of parents surveyed said, "Get the kids back in school." That hasn't changed. I mean, I don't do social media. Maybe I should. Maybe I'd know more. I kind of doubt it, though. And I just think that from what I've heard from my friends and from people in the community, they want the kids back in school. I'm so glad our hardworking teachers have been given priority for the vaccine. Genius. It's past time to get our kids back in school. Let's do it. That was three minutes? Wow, okay. Thank you.
I'm not here as an ESMIC person. I'm not here as a parent. I'm here to speak on behalf of the kids. And I wasn't coming until this morning's conversation. So, I'm going to tell you what happened this morning in my class. So, for me, I would like to get this straight in my mind, so correct me if I'm wrong, but on Thursday, the governor says kids aren't learning, and there's no evidence that they should not be back in school. But then on Tuesday, he says the worst is yet to come, beginning in March, and many more people will die. I was not the only person to listen to both press conferences. Our students were listening. So, from one of my students today, "Mrs. Payne, I have a question for you." I went, "Oh, my God." All right, you never know what's going to come out of a kid's mouth when you have that open-ended question. As Dr. Smith knows, that was one of his son's favorite triggers to me that always made me go, "Oh, my God, what is he going to say?" So, I took a deep breath. I said, "All right, I'm ready. So, let me just get this straight." And this is the kid saying this. "So, let me just get this straight. On Thursday, the governor tells us that we aren't learning, and there's no reason not to go back to school. But then on Tuesday, the governor announces that many people are dying, and the worst is coming in March. So, why are we being sent back when the worst is coming? It almost seems as if they want the kids to die." I didn't know how to respond, so I took about, I don't know, it felt like 12 minutes, but it was probably only 15 seconds. And I assured that student that this was not the case, but I honestly had no answer because the numbers hadn't changed, and everything that they had been told and relied on, fact-based, 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 reliable sources, was gone. So, as a history teacher, I'm left to ponder the concept of the common good. Has anyone talked to the students? Have you asked the students? This is only one student, but if one person asks this question, then I have to ask myself how many more are wondering the same thing.
Is that it? Okay. All right. Let's see. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda, which today consists of the approval of minutes of January 6, 2021, the approval of minutes of January 13, 2021, personnel, teachers. There are no A&amp;S appointments. And then lastly, it would be professional services contract, Department of Special Education. So, I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Roll call vote. Mary? Jim?
Aye.
Rita?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
And myself as aye. Thank you, Mary. I was reading lips there for a moment.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Let's see, our first action item is approval of the fiscal year 2022 Board of Education Recommended Operating Budget with Dr. Smith and Ms. McCourt.
Good evening.
While he's getting that ready, clearly previewed, we have good news on the budget.
We absolutely do. As a matter of fact, an update for fiscal year 2020 budget document, as well as a supplemental budget, and the list of the changes made to the unrestricted fund budget, as well as the county's required budget forms have all been uploaded to Board Docs for your reference.
Come on, come on. Doesn't want to open that.
So, I'll steal the thunder a little bit. So, as we had talked during the last budget work sessions, the big question that was coming out when the governor presented his budget, whether or not he was going to enact a home, hold harmless provision based on the reduction of enrollment that was seen across the state. So, that was included. So, that does change our numbers and our requests from the county. So, with that, go ahead.
And actually, Dr. Smith, this is the next presentation.
Yes, it is.
Oh, dear God.
Do I have to continue to fill?
Yeah. Budget work session, there it is. Come on, open.
Nope, that's not it.
Hold on, let me close out everything. And just open the budget work session. Come on.
And a little bit more filler. We did numbers on Friday from MSTE, and those numbers are incorporated in this presentation. And that is what was included in the governor's budget. So, we'll start with the restricted fund budget changes. We don't typically focus a lot on the restricted fund budget during your budget deliberations. However, there were two rather significant changes that were noteworthy. We've received notification that the second wave of the elementary and secondary school emergency relief funds being provided in the amount of $11.6 million. This is a grant application process, and we're currently in the process of writing that grant. This allocation will be made available for our use through September 30 of 2023. And at this point, we are looking to develop a summer learning recovery program, as well as putting some of those funds towards continued technology improvements. So, we've incorporated that in this budget document. Additionally, on Friday, with these state aid numbers being released by MSTE, it included a supplemental instruction and tutoring grant in the amount of $2 million. So, those are rather significant changes to your restricted fund budget.
And it's our intention to bring to you next month, before we finalize the submission for the ESA2 grant, you'll see exactly what's in that budget and what we're proposing the $11.6 million would be spent on.
On the unrestricted side, what you see before you is where we left off at the last meeting, and that included a request of $118.5 million in local fund, or an increase of $9 million, the $1.9 million local fund use of fund balance, as well as an anticipated amount from the state of $108.8 million, or a decrease in state funding of $2.2 million. So, the budget totaled $233,413,452, or an increase of $2.3 million, or 1%. At the last meeting, you did provide us direction to include transportation funds specifically for bus contractors to increase their fringe benefit rate from 25% to 26.5%. So, this budget modification does include an increase of $77,560. And as Ms. Bailey stated, the governor's budget did include hold harmless grants. The harmless grant amount was, we were notified of that amount on Friday, the amount for St. Mary's County Public Schools for next fiscal year totals $6.1 million. And that leads to a modification in the request in local funds. It has now been reduced to $116 million, or an increase over the current fiscal year of $6.4 million. Looking down at the state line, that line has now been increased to $11.4 million, which also represents a $360,000 increase over the current year. And that's simply as a result of the special education out-of-county public placements carryover from this year's placements and the revenues being generated in next year. So, the bottom line of the budget increased simply by that $77,000 for transportation, as compared to what was presented to you last week. So, the total increase in this year's budget over last year is $2.4 million, or a 1% increase.
So, the big number here is the $6.4 million that we would be seeking from the county commissioners above the funding of the previous year. That's a substantial number. For that number, that would get us St. Mary's County Public Schools a fully funding of our negotiated agreement. As we previously presented, for every employee in St. Mary's County Public Schools, they would see a step on July 1. And for ESMIC members, they would see a 1.75 salary scale adjustment. $6.4 million. Where will that money come from? We have exceptionally good news that was shared with the county in December, when the commissioners presented their audited financials from the previous year, and they updated their revenue outlook. They do this every December. They originally forecast and approve a budget based on what they believe their revenue will be for the year. So, for fiscal year 2021, the approved budget that they thought their revenue target was $248.2 million. As of December, Jeanette Cudmore went back and did a pro forma calculation based on all the information that they have, all the revenue coming in and what that all looks like. They're projecting that property will go up about $600,000 more than they forecast. But income will go up $7.3 million above what they were budgeting. So, overall, they're going to see a $6.2 million increase overall in their revenues in this year's money. We're not talking about 2022 estimates. The 2022 estimates are another $4 million on top of that. But in this year's money, they have more than $6 million available. So, our request of $6.4 million, based on exactly the revenue that they have in hand right now, pro forma shown to be for this year, they have the resources to fully fund our request. So, we believe we are sending over a budget that is very clearly aligned to exactly where the county finds itself right now. And this is the best shape the county has ever been in as far as revenue forecasting aligning to the needs of the school system. So, we think we're in very good shape. And we look forward to being one of the first parties at the table to talk about the 2022 budget. In the years past, we had been the last in the process. We coordinated with them at the end of the year, and they agreed to us being one of the first groups that's considered. That's why we've been on this expedited path. That's why we're seeking your approval of the budget today, so that we can then immediately send it over to their consideration. So, with that, I request that the board approve the agenda item as presented.
Taking my line. All right. Nagina, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Good question. Thank you.
Mrs. Washington?
No questions.
No questions? Okay. Rita?
No questions.
Kathy?
I don't have any questions. On two points, I thank you for including the fixed charges for the bus contractors. I also am really pleased that the governor understood the challenges we're facing and the reason behind them for the decreased enrollment, and that he has agreed to hold harmless so that we can maintain the enrollment that we've had and the funding for that, since we are quite certain that all of those kindergartners whose parents decided that what worked best for them was to withdraw them for this current year, that they will more than likely be back with us for first grade, and we welcome their return. So, that's it.
Okay. With that, may I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the recommended budget for fiscal year 2022 as presented and forward to the county, forward to the commissioners of St. Mary's County for their review and approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, roll call. Mary?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rita?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
And myself as aye. Motion is carried. And let's see, our next item is the Transitional Supplemental Instruction Grant with Mrs. Bachner.
Good evening, everyone. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good evening.
Good. And Dr. Smith, I'm hoping you're going to bring up my PowerPoint slide.
There you go. Look, I was better with this one.
He's already tried to bring it up three times.
Yeah, I was going to say, we already looked at it a couple times.
Third time's the charm.
So, here tonight to share with you a request to do a categorical transfer. I'm going to go back in time a little bit. In May of 2019, with Senate Bill 1030, the blueprint for Maryland's Future, we had Transitional Supplemental Instruction Funds distributed to us, and it's for struggling learners. It's very specific that these funds were designated to provide additional academic support using evidence-based programs and strategies to, as defined by the Every Students Succeeds Act. And this is pre-COVID. So, this was already in place to help our most needy learners, our little ones, with reading in 2019. TSI includes in the grant, you could apply for one-on-one small group tutoring with a certified teacher, a teaching assistant, or any other trained professional, peer tutoring, screening, identifying, and addressing literacy deficits with research-based practices, as well as interventions that included training and resources that went to deliver those interventions. And for these funds, struggling learners were defined as students that were below grade level in English Language Arts in the grades of kindergarten through grade three. So, when we developed the grant, after that funding was given to us in 2019, specifically, these are what we put into our grant, a lead interventionist, which we did hire, and that's Kelly Hall, not Dr. Hall, but Kelly, I'll call her Kelly Ie Hall. We also put in, if you remember, 20 hourly literacy intervention teacher assistant positions that would go through abacus. that would go through abacus. We also supported the Reading Assessment Administration, which is DIBELS and IGDS in our younger students at each elementary school, and then put in professional development such as conferences and team meetings, stipends and substitutes for that to take place, and then some purchase of research-based resources. When COVID hit in March 13th, we only had six, if we go back to the slide just one minute. We only had six out of the 20 that we had budgeted, the lead interventionist teacher assistants hired, but we even had to stop placing those six at that time because we didn't have any hourly employees working from March until we resumed school in September. So those funds were not utilized at all or touched in the grant. We also couldn't have teams get together for professional development or go to conferences as we planned, because number one, all the conferences really were canceled. They're coming back slowly but surely in a virtual environment, which are less costly to us. And then we were somewhat blessed in that we now have Fridays where we can do professional development. So instead of having to get substitutes or paying teachers stipends after their duty day, we were able to provide that professional development and still have our team meetings, but during the school week. So again, we save money. And anytime you save a position, you're also saving fixed charges. So it was at that point that the grant runs out June 30th of this year that we thought that we really needed to do an amendment so that we do utilize that money and can utilize it for the purposes that the grant was intended, although not initially as we intended. So what I'm asking for is a reallocation request that we decrease instructional salaries and wages and other instructional costs and the fixed charges that go with them for a total decrease of $298,839, and move them to M L I or textbook and instructional supplies that still meet the parameters of the grant by purchasing research-based intervention resources in the amount of $298,839 so that we do not lose these funds come June 30th, 2021. So with that, as a result of the COVID pandemic, funds initially designated for additional instructional support have not transpired. Therefore, we feel that the funds need to be reallocated to support the purchase of materials of instruction. So I'm recommending that the board approve this agenda item as presented. Thank you.
Nagina, do you have any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Mary?
No questions. Thank you.
Jim?
No questions. Thank you.
Rita?
So these funds, will you expand it beyond the kindergarten through third grade? Or are you contained to have to keep these funds in that age or grade level? Or can it be expanded to all elementary?
These funds specifically need to be targeted to K through three. But we're lucky enough, we also have other grants, like the Striving Readers Grant, that does go birth through grade 12. So we're able to use those grants to help with the youngest students' birth through pre-K. And then also any students' grades four through 12, we're able to use with that grant. But unfortunately, this grant is specific to grades K through three.
Okay, thank you.
Kathy, do you have anything?
Um, I guess my only question is...
I can ask my question if you're.
Yeah, I'm trying to think the best way to ask it.
My only question is, are, will the materials that are being purchased, are they going to support additional instruction and tutoring for students who might be falling short? Or will they also be incorporated into the current curriculum that we have? Like, can we get like a double whammy out of it?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, we can. But, and I will specify, there are four things we're looking to purchase, so they're going to come across to you because they're going to be.
To you next, right.
Okay.
Right, this is just to move the money over so that we can access, and then you will get.
I understand. I just want to make sure that.
We're buying, a big purchase is G O D, which goes with the foundation's intervention, which you've all heard, that happens in all of our classrooms, K through two. And there are decodable texts that can be used in small groups in every classroom, K one. And if we have enough money, we're going to go to second grade for that.
All right, I was just, based on, based on the heels of the restricted fund amount that we just put into the budget, I just wanted to make sure that we were, you know, that we were still making, or even we're funding purchases this year that will support that $13 million coming in over the next three. So, okay. Kathy, did that help you?
Yeah, I just, I just want to make sure that the materials that are going to be purchased in lieu of one-on-one or small group face-to-face tutoring will stand alone, are things that the students are really going to be able to work with since we know that our K through three students are really some of the ones who are struggling the most with virtual learning.
Yes, and we've been, we have four things identified that are, support our research-based interventions. And one of the purposes of doing this, first of all, is not to lose the money, of course, by June 30th. But another reason is really to make sure that we have the opportunity now to do the amendment, move that money into materials instruction, and hopefully not have to purchase materials instruction when the grant renews for another year next year so we can hopefully load the grant with more positions to help students without having to pay for the materials. So that's kind of what we're doing also, is trying to front-load the materials purchase because we can't have the staff, or we are not able to get the staff in schools so that when we are able to get the staff in schools, hopefully with another grant allotment, we'll be able to not buy the materials, but load more of those literacy teaching assistance into the budget.
That's really helpful to understand because, as we know, that opportunity for students who are struggling to really connect personally and face-to-face with a caring adult who is able to assist them, the smaller those groups can be, the better it's going to be for our kids. And so I'm really pleased that you had the foresight to be able to reprogram these funds so that we can make best use of the funds that are coming. So thank you. I think this is really going to benefit the kids greatly.
We do too. And I will tell you, we still, right now, this school year, we're able to keep those six literacy coaches or assistants that we hired, and they are providing virtual interventions for nine of our elementary schools and doing a great job.
Super. I'd like to hear more about that in the future. Thanks.
Yeah.
Okay, may I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the fiscal year 2021 categorical budget adjustment in the amount of $298,839. And submittal of this budget adjustment to the commissioners of St. Mary's County for their approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All right, roll call vote. Mary?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rita? Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
And myself is aye. Motion is carried. All right, oops, sorry. The last item is, last but not least, is the Chesapeake Public Charter School update. And somewhere we have.
Look how fast I'm on this one. Look at that.
Look how quick that is.
Come on.
We have more people apparently joining us. I believe we have, we have Ms. Funia somewhere. The screen is very small.
I saw Ms. Funia join us.
She disappeared on me.
I think she needs to turn her camera back on.
Says every high school teacher everywhere.
Ever. There she is.
There she is.
Okay, I'm gonna go back to just the presenter window.
Okay.
And.
All right, who's taking the lead here?
I am.
Okay.
Good evening again. And before I begin, I would like to take this opportunity to thank Dr. Kelly Hall for all she has done for the Chesapeake Public Charter School for as many years that has been, has been approved as a charter school. Last summer, as some of our responsibilities were realigned in the Department of Instruction, I was assigned as the point of contact to the charter school. It truly has been a privilege to have been given this job, but I would be remiss if I didn't thank Dr. Hall for all she has done for so many years and all the support she continues to provide to me as I transition into this role, and still for the benefit of the continued success of the Chesapeake Public Charter School. Your work, Dr. Hall, is very much appreciated, so very much thank you. And you have little shoes to fill, but there are very big shoes to fill.
They're very high-heeled shoes, too.
Very high. So tonight I come before you with this, with both Ms. Angela Funia, Chesapeake Public Charter School Education Director, and Ms. Mary Beth Nauman, Chesapeake Charter School Alliance Chairperson, to share with you information that serves to satisfy the requirements of performance reporting from our contractual agreement. This agreement states, "The performance report and self-evaluation shall be jointly presented at the next publicly scheduled meeting of the board by the designee and the charter school for the benefit of the public and the school community. Each year for the term of this charter agreement following completion of the final financial audit and the unembargaded publication of the results of state mandated assessments, whichever is later." Well, as you know, this year is a different year, and no state mandated tests or assessments were taken. Therefore, this year, we will present to you the audit findings along with a state of the charter school type presentation for an update of what and how this charter school is doing to meet this reporting requirement. So at this time, I will turn the presentation over to Ms. Funia.
Thank you, Lisa. I'm going to echo your sentiments for Dr. Hall. Just a huge thank you for all of the work that you've done with us over the years. It has been much appreciated. And Lisa, welcome and good luck. I'm going to introduce Mary Beth Nauman. She is the chair of our governing board, and she's going to kick off the beginning of the presentation. We basically just wanted to provide you with an overview of how we finished up last year and how we're navigating during the pandemic, as well as give you a little bit of information on our upcoming lottery and admissions process. So with that, I will give it to you, Mary Beth.
All right, thanks, Ange. And so I also, I cannot stress enough our thankfulness for Dr. Hall. Certainly really appreciate all of your passion. And I really just can't echo enough what's been said already, and the strong relationship that we have with the county and the Board of Ed is because of all of your work. So thank you again for that. I'm going to dive in with the financial audit and the results of that. We did provide that in the email, and so those audit results were sent via email. So you do have those in detail. I do want to highlight that because we do have a nonprofit that is the governing board for the school, our audit is a little bit different because there's that nonprofit piece. So just to provide that insight as well. And then in addition to that, the nonprofit does have the oversight of the building, the upkeep of the building, the ownership of the building. So it's a little bit more complex than the other public schools. So just keep that in mind. Any questions on the financial audit?
None.
None. Well, besides congratulations, excellent job, so.
Thank you, thank you. It's always, it's always a nice thing. So we always appreciate that. And one of the things I will say is that we did have the auditor come to our board meeting to help to educate the board, to understand the responsibility that we have as a board for the fiscal responsibility that we have. So that was very helpful, too. And we're very appreciative of our auditors and the amount of information that they're able to provide. The next piece dives into our federal grant status. You might remember that we had a $900,000 grant that we were so thankful for. It was a three-year grant. We were able to, we're in the last year of this. We were able to use that funding most recently for the renovation of our media center, our music area. Can't wait to be able to show it to you because it's phenomenal. And that helps us with our expansion. If you recall, we're expanding from two classes per grade level to three classes per grade level. So we are fully expanded out for the elementary, K to five. And in the fall, we'll start with middle school, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. So we're excited for that. And so the funding went towards that. And then we were also able to actually adjust some of the funding to support for our COVID-19 needs. So that's been helpful. The UV scrubbers that the county is using, we have also been able to purchase. That was our responsibility because we own that building. So we were able to purchase the same ones for the H V A C system. So we're glad to have that in place for when we do go back in the building. And then in addition to that, there were stipends that were there that were for virtual learning, for development for our staff so that they could have what they needed in order to feel like they were well-equipped to go back to virtual learning. So we'll go on to the next slide. So we also had additional grants we were able to apply for because we are a nonprofit, that PPP grant for $6,800. And in addition to that, we're delighted to say that we also received a $50,000 grant, and that went towards additional laptops, technology that we needed. And in addition to that, we have a social emotional coach that we had before that the other grant we were using, we were able to keep her onboard, Molly McCloskey. She has been phenomenal, and being able to be supportive of staff, being able to be supportive of families. And so being able to keep her onboard through this pandemic has been wonderful. So that was another way that we used that funding. So for fundraising, we did take a little bit of a hit because of COVID. So in the spring, when we had to close, some of our fundraisers were impacted. So we were about $10,000 short. The nice thing is, some of our expenses were also down because of COVID, so that wasn't too big of a hit for us. In terms of the current fundraising budget, we've raised $60,000. I will say that $40,000 of that is from one of the benefactors who saw that we might need some extra funding due to COVID and also saw the phenomenal job that our staff is doing in order to be able to provide the education to our students. So that $40,000 was welcomed and a nice surprise at the end of last year. In addition to that, a shout-out to the fundraising committee. Most of our fundraisers are usually in person. We were able to pivot those to be virtual, some passive fundraisers, a direct appeal. So $20,000, we were also already able to raise as well for this calendar year, this school year. And so with that, the one thing I do want to highlight before I hand it over to Ange as well is that one of the things that we are using some of the grant money for is a long-term strategic plan. And that long-term strategic plan, we'll look forward to presenting that to you next year as we get it under our belt and be able to tell you what that looks like. We're looking at the organizational structure of the infrastructure of the school, and how do we do that, the administration, and how is that organizational structure done. And I cannot say enough about Ms. Funia, Ms. Antonaccio, Ms. Embrielli, and the amount of work that they have put in over the last year. Obviously, all of the staff, but the three of them have really gone above and beyond in taking to heart what it's like to run a school during a pandemic. So I'm just so, I'm so proud and so delighted to be working with them. And I hope that you, I'm sure that you, in addition to all the struggles that we've had in the past year, are also able to see all of the blessings. And they are such a blessing to us and our school community. So certainly thank them for that. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Funia.
Thanks, thanks, Mary Beth. That's a true story. We have definitely, what I have seen as one of the blessings of this pandemic has been the collaboration that has, that has come out of it and just the coming together, even in this virtual world, of a great group of people, the entire staff. It's been phenomenal. And it took a lot. It took a lot to do that return-to-school planning because, as you know, we start earlier than you. So we had to roll into getting a plan together prior to you guys starting, which was a labor of love and a little bit scary at the same time. But because we did a lot of communicating with our parents and our staff and focus groups and daily constant communication, we were able to go ahead and plan our return to virtual in early August. And in that way, we were able to kind of offer ourselves, which is what charter schools are supposed to be, as little pilot programs or the opportunity for kind of a lab school-type situation in order to get that virtual program up and running. And so we did a lot of collaborating with Lisa, with Alex, with the supervisors to be schoology writers, to get all of that loaded in. We essentially created our own program of studies because, as you know, the way we deliver our curriculum is a little bit different. It can be integrated. And so we don't always follow the same pacing guides as the rest of the county. So we wanted that to be reflected in our schoology courses. So we were able to do that and work closely with S M C P S staff and supervisor. So I think I probably already addressed that slide, so you can keep going. But one of the other pieces that we tried to do was just also support our parents in making this transition, how does that look for them? And what kinds of needs did they have with respect to, you know, whether it's executive functioning or schoology or math nights? You know, we tried to keep all of that moving in that same virtual platform. And that has been very well-received and really taken up by our staff. They have tackled that in the evenings, working with parents, helping them understand how to help their children, how to get through these difficult times. So, but through this whole process, we still had to keep in mind all of the requirements of our charter agreement. And so we needed to make sure that our facility was meeting the compliance of CDC guidelines, making sure that we had increased outdoor learning spaces. You know, it's part of our mission and vision anyway, is to be outside and in the environment as we're learning. So we created several additional spaces and kind of gave each. So we created several additional spaces and kind of gave each grade level the opportunity to go out for those three days we were back, but we'll, you know, have those in place for the spring as well. And then just making sure that nightly, we're cleaning and disinfecting our building, just so that everybody's anxiety levels can kind of stay low, that all of those things are being addressed and covered. Lisa Bakker and I meet on a weekly basis and just continue to keep that accountability piece in place. And then our Governing Board is very active, engaged, and they meet on a monthly basis. Okay, now roll into kind of that comparison for you of last school year to this current school year and where we are right now. Our demographics don't look all that different, but the one thing I do want to note is that because we had waited our lottery, we anticipated that our economically disadvantaged population would increase by about 3% on a yearly basis. We did not see that this year, and we're not extremely surprised because food services has been providing meals for everybody. So a lot of families have chosen not to continue to fill out the forms and have all that in place. That's kind of the best reason that we think we didn't really see that, even though we brought in that increased percentage during our lottery process last year. So we'll be curious to see as we move throughout the rest of this year if that needs to increase because the food service program will change because we're back in school. I don't know what happened to that, but it's just something that we're actively taking a look at. Our admissions process is in December, and we couldn't do any of our normal parent nights where we introduce our school to our families or prospective families. So we created a little eight-minute video. I linked it in this for you. We're not going to run it now, but we just thought that's a great overview of our program and of our school. So it would give everybody a little bit of history, as well as a good idea of our educational program offerings, in the way that we may be a little bit different than a traditional public school. So we offered that on our admissions page on our website and our press releases. We, we put that outreach out to all the title schools in the district. We offered three virtual information sessions for parents to attend, and we didn't have a ton of people. We definitely had more people in person, but we also had some conversations with parents. Your video was great. We really didn't have any questions. So that was a good thing to hear. So to date, we have 360 applicants. That is down from four, I think it was 445 last year. Again, we believe that to be impacted by the pandemic. We have, out of our current families, 28 kindergarten siblings, siblings have preference, so they, they will be automatically enrolled in the, in the program, which leaves 26 open seats for the rest of the students that have applied to the school. 95 kindergarten applicants, that makes up about 29% of the overall applicants. And then out of those applicants, 80 have indicated that they are economically disadvantaged or that they will apply for the free reduced meals, which is how we gauge that. And that's about 24%. You can see here, I know you always like to know where our kids are coming from. Lexington Park is, is our highest number of applicants, followed closely by Great Mills and California, a little bit from Leonard Town, and then a few from north and a few from the far south. So I turn it back to Lisa.
I need to unmute myself. As I'm sure you can agree, the Chesapeake Public Charter School is healthy in all facets, financially, facilities, academics, recruitment, staffing, and communication. I look forward to continuing our work and partnering with them. We have so much to learn from our partnership with one another. At this time, I ask the board, are there any questions or comments?
Nagina, do you have anything?
No questions, thank you.
Mrs. Washington?
Where, on the page where it says where our students are coming from, some of, a couple are more from out of state. So can you explain that?
I can. We have a provision where, in our, in our agreement, where I want to take into consideration military families who may be moving into the area because they're being stationed at PAX. So we do allow for that. The standing rule is that they have to be, they have to have an address in the county upon registration of the school.
Oh, okay, I understand. It's their home of record, so their home of record may be Connecticut or New York. They are here. Yeah, I was wondering about that. Oh, thank you for explaining that.
Mr. Davis?
No questions, but just kudos to everybody. What a great program you got. And let's hope that your enrollment increases next year.
Rita? If you can, if you can speak.
I know, over here choking. I wanted to say that I did look at the video, and it was fantastic. I really enjoyed going through it, provided wonderful information, and it was, it was fun to watch. So you guys did a great job putting that together.
Kathy?
Thank you.
Also appreciate the glossy that you sent around to us, really talking about, you know, who you are and where you've been and, and what the kids are doing. That was, that was very enjoyable. I also just personally greatly appreciate that you did make the adjustment for military families who are moving to the area and who have often expressed a real interest in being able to attend the charter school and who were, who struggled with that based on the way military moves people. So it, it means a lot to me, so thank you for doing that very much. And congratulations to everyone there.
Thank you.
Overall, great job, and I'm just going to highlight to anyone who might not have caught it at the beginning, is that you guys are on an earlier start date than what the public school, the traditional public school students are. So for you to work and get your content loaded, and you're right, you did basically create your entire academic year in a course of, you know, weeks. So thank you to everyone, you know, down there and here in Mocley Street that worked to make sure that was done, so your students were standing tall and ready at the beginning of August. So, and, you know, great job overall. So, and I did read the entire audit report. I am like that, so very good job. So, and I'm very happy that you guys continue to coordinate with Tammy and her staff. I just think it makes everyone, you know, you can't have too many eyes on anything. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone have anything else?
Nope.
All right, then the next board meeting will be on February 10th at 9:00 a.m., and we are adjourned.